Sure, yeah, no problem. So let me do roll call. Chair Walker.
Here.
Vice Chair Sleaf.
Here.
Member Patil, not here yet. Member Skolnik.
Here.
And Thomas Hill, like to report, we have a new committee member, Thomas Hill.
I, it's Tom, and here.
Yeah, sorry, Tom, Tom Hill, sorry about that. Welcome to the committee. And I have you down. Mayor Degoya, don't have. And.
I'm here.
Tom. She's still connecting.
Yeah, okay.
Ah, there you are, great. So we.
Hi.
We have, hi, how are you? We have a full, full committee.
So I, I just wanted to quickly, now that we're called to order, take the opportunity to formally introduce and welcome Tom Hill to our committee. This is his first official committee meeting, and we're really glad to have him on the committee. I'd also like to introduce the guest, Steve Brickley, who was, he applied for our committee, and then withdrew in favor of letting Tom go on, which I thought was a really very sweet thing to do. But we're really hoping to get him interested so that he will apply again in the future. So he's up here to keep us on our toes, right? Right, Steve?
You got it.
Okay, good. That's great. Are there any public comments?
No, I'm just gonna apologize in advance, I'm gonna have to be off video, but I'm here and listening, if that's okay.
Okay, great, thank you. So I see in here, no public comment. The first item on our regular agenda is to review and approve the draft minutes from our previous meeting on January 11. Are there any comments or questions about the, the minutes? I had one, and I should know the answer to this, Robert, but I was too lazy to go pull out my materials from the last meeting. In number six, the presentation from Calpers, is that correct that we were actually looking at reports that from 2020, not from 2021? That is right, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Correct, they're always two years lag.
It always throws me off, because they're so far behind. Okay, well then, can I have a move to approve the minutes?
I'll move.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
To approve.
Second.
Okay, great, seconds. Minutes are approved. The.
And I get a roll, let me do a roll call real quick.
Sure.
Chair Walker.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Sleaf.
Yes.
Member Skolnik.
Yes.
And Member Patil.
Yes.
And that's all in favor. And I'm just not including you, Mr. Hill, because you were not on the committee at that time, so it's not, I'm not doing it deliberately, but deliberately but not deliberately. Sorry.
Okay, so the, the next item on our agenda is to review, discuss, receive, and file the town's master plan projects and financial planning model. This was previously presented to the city council, and I'm glad that we're getting a presentation here, because I think it'll help us going forward on various matters that we are concerned with. So, Robert, take it away.
All right, thank you Chair Walker. Yes, this item before you is a review and discuss the town master plan projects and our financial planning model. Staff is providing this, this financial planning model that was presented to the city council. As the town, town center project nears its completion, the town will turn it focused towards other town master plan capital projects and other long-term liabilities. This was a discussion of the, of the planning model to assist the council in reviewing the allocation of unallocated general funds over the next five years to town priorities. During the presentation, this was held on, it's at the city council's March 2 study session, and discussion included dividing priorities into buckets, if you call, and funding allocation scenarios to various programs. The model illustrates financial impact of our CIP, capital improvement projects, master plan, and long-term liability decision-making. It assists the council on identifying priorities for this unallocated general fund balance as we prepare for our 2223 budget and outlook planning for the next five years. Is anticipated that, in the staff report, is anticipated the council allocated approximately five, about $5 million towards the payment of pension liabilities, and will also look at allocation of additional funding for our various master plans that would include our bike pad, pedestrian master plan, drainage master plan, parks, and road maintenance projects. Just real quick, the unallocated general fund balance is the single most significant revenue source for the town's capital improvement projects, other than streets and roads funding that's available as separate revenues towards capital projects. The general fund is the underlying source for any additional funding towards our capital improvement project plan. In the, as I'll show you the financial model, it segregates revenues as one-time and at-risk revenues. It reveals our American Rescue Plan, our excess ERAF and VOF in lieu. In our revenues, ERAF and VOF and property taxes are our biggest revenue generators for the town, so those are, you'll see those in the bucket. If we can pull up the spreadsheet.
Rick's joining us, great.
Do you want my help with that, Robert?
I think we. If I can.
Welcome, Rick.
I'm here.
Pull that up. Okay, can you see my screen?
You can.
Yep.
Okay, so as mentioned, so the financial model segregates our out-year financial planning tool for several years, and it segregates major revenues, which would be our property taxes, sales tax, franchise fees, business license, planning, W revenues, and so forth. And then communicated, it has, we have at-risk, one-time revenues, and listed in this bucket is our ERAF, our excess ERAF, our VOF in lieu, taxes that we receive, and some funding that we received in 2021 was our rule 28 swap, that's our PGN credit that we sold.
Robert, 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 I'm sorry to interrupt, but since we do have a new member and a member of the public on board on this call, could you please, when you use acronyms the first time, could you please let them know what it, what those are? Thanks.
Correct. So excess ERAF and, and Mr. Hill, as we get further in, in the next couple of months, feel free to, we can meet together one-on-one to go into these further. So excess ERAF is called, ERAF stands for educational revenue augmentation fund, and those are property tax funds that are due each jurisdiction. It's a separate bucket within each city, each agency has ERAF funding that, funds that are left over for education that the state uses to edu, for state education for school districts. Any excess funding that's left over after the state allocates to school districts is returned back to the agencies of where it was generated. So the town of Atherton has excess education revenue augmentation funding, or ERAF, that comes back to the town of Atherton, and it's through a form of property tax. So we received in fiscal year 2122, we received 2.2 million. And VOF in lieu is, stands for vehicle license registration fee. In lieu, meaning back in 2004, the state did some bond issuance, and to, to get the bonds that were issued, they decide, they used our vehicle license fee for cities, and what they did is they swapped vehicle license fees in lieu of property tax fees, property taxes. So the VOF in lieu swap is actual property taxes given back to the cities for the VOF, vehicle license revenue, that back in 2004, the state used to pay off, to get bonds and to pay those off over time. So those are a form of property tax back to the town and back to cities. So many cities and towns in the state have this VOF in lieu property tax, which is vehicle license fee.
Excuse me, Robert, where do we get the sales taxes from? We don't collect our own sales tax here, do we?
We do, there's sales tax to school districts, the school districts, I mean, the schools here in the town and the college. They, they have point of sales on the campuses, so there's self-tax that we derive from there. And also there's self-tax, there's some, through the years, there've been some private sale of art, and they're derived from this, from, from our town. So the self-tax through the procurement of art through the town is, is, comes back to us as a form of self-tax.
I was thrown off, because obviously don't have any commercial businesses, okay, I get you.
Correct, correct.
I think the circus club is the biggest single payer.
Thank you.
And the circus club, correct. Correct, and, and through, through, through those avenues is where we have the self-tax, but you do not have any other commercial besides the schools and the circus club and private sale of artwork. So, so yes, so this at-risk, one-time revenue was put into this these revenue buckets to show that if at one, any given year, there could be a reduction in this revenue. And so we, we put these in here just to identify them as we move forward in our projections. Because sometimes these, these two buckets right here, the excess ERAF and VOF in lieu, are some, some of the property tax areas that could fluctuate in, in, in what we receive from year to year. So, again, in the, in the spreadsheet, we also have below, there's our total general fund revenues. And in 2122, we have 22.2 million budgeted. And then we have our, illustrate our major expenditures. We have operation expenditures, CIP, general fund allocation out from the general fund to our CIP projects. And this one right here is 3.5 million, that's the remaining amount on the town center project. Other, other than operation expenditures, we have COP debt service. That's an expenditure that we have, it's a, it's a for our, our COP lease agreement that we have, that we issued COP bonds back in 2020, and this is the payment back to, to pay off that, the note that we, that we received for cash flow for the, the construction of the town center project.
Robert, Robert, Robert. Bob has had his hand up for a while, I'd like to call on Bob, please.
Oh, sorry.
I was just gonna comment a couple things. ERAF, I believe there's only four entities in the entire state that receive excess ERAF back, is that correct, Robert?
Correct, correct. The, the, let me see if I can recite the counties, it's San Mateo, Marin, Napa, and there's one more, but there's, there's four counties in the entire state that receive this excess ERAF revenue. So this excess ERAF revenue is, is revenue that's kind of looked at from the state standpoint as revenue that, like, for a grab of additional funding. So there's four counties in the entire state that receive this, and it's at stake every year with, through the state legislator, as far as the reduction, possible reduction of, of that funding. And that's why, and then thank you, Councilmember Polito, and that's why we list it as one-time at-risk revenue. We've always, back since 2013, we allocate in budget excess ERAF below the line, so that in, in time, there was, there was, there's the perception that eventually there will be no more excess ERAF revenue coming to the four counties that currently receive that.
Is there an easy explanation as to why three of those four are here in the Bay Area?
I think the high value of property values in, in most districts that are in these areas, the property value, property taxes that are generated in those districts are sufficient to fund those school districts alone. The excess ERAF was created as a funding mechanism for the state, for the, if there's property taxes within those school districts that couldn't fund themselves, this education revenue augmentation fund would backfill that. So a quick, easy answer is because of the, the increase in, in, the property values in these counties are, are higher, and, and so that they produce sufficient taxes for the school districts.
Thank you.
Another question?
Well, so similarly, on, on the VLF in lieu, we have a problem that the state doesn't have enough money to pay us what they owe us each year. So they have to budget in the following year, money to fill the shortfall. And of course, they don't like, they just assume not fill the shortfall and spend it somewhere else, so that, that also is in jeopardy because of the way it's being managed. So it's fairly, kind of a big deal, the, over $3 million of our income this year could go away at a moment's notice at some point due to the, some action taken by the legislature, so I just wanted the people, the new people to understand a little bit about that.
That's great, thank you, Bob. I see Steve has his hand up, too.
Wondering if there's any lobbying or pressure or influence that we have over ERAF or VLF at all to make sure it keeps coming?
Yes, sir. Currently, the, the agencies, the counties that currently receive these, these fundings, they have lobbyists, they send letters to the legislator, to our, our our own representatives at the legislator. We've sent letters via the, our city council in support of, of this funding. Again, these two funding mechanisms, they are actual, they are property revenues that our town and cities are entitled to, so we do have, the county has a big lobbyist, each of these counties have lobbying efforts in, in, in departments that lobby on behalf of the county, plus the cities within the county, and the cities themselves also send letters and have lobbyists as well in, in support to the legislator on, on the importance of these revenues.
And as long as we're stopped, we skipped over CIP. That's capital improvements projects, is that right?
Yes. CIP is short term for capital improvement projects, and GF means, is our general fund. And the allocation is, the general fund allocates, is allocating in this fiscal year is 3.5 million to the town center project. This is the remaining amount to finish the completion of the town center project. The town portion was about 28 million of the town center project. The library is about 18 million, so the total project is about, roughly about 47, approximately 47, 48 million for, for both the town center and the library. So this 3.5 is just the town center portion, and the general fund is contributing the remaining amount to finish the project. And then, oh, and then real quick, on the COP debt service, COP stands for certificate participation, their, their leaseback financing that the, that agencies can go get into as far as a leaseback on, on debt service for different capital projects, and for us, it was, it was cash flow for our town center project. On this next line is ARC OPEB, so again, this is another abbreviation. So it's our actuarial required contribution, and OPEB stands for other post-employment benefits. So this means other post-employment benefits, retiree health benefits, that at a time, at a point in time, employees of the town had a vested right for retiree health benefits at one point in time. Back in 2012, the town no longer has the retiree health contributions going forward. So this is just from retiree health from 2012 and below, of those that receive that. So this is our allocation of 182,000 in the current 2223 fiscal year. Another one is UAL, Calpers Pension. UAL stands for unfunded actuarial liability. And the, the town participates in Calpers Pension for its town employees. And so this is, again, one of our major expenditures in addition to these other buckets of operation expenditures, CIP, COP, debt service, ARC, and again, our UAL for Calpers Pension. So the, the, the total for the 2223, 20.9 million against revenues of 22.2 million, gives us a net of 1.28 million. Our current general fund balance, our reserve, which, which in layman's terms, or if it was a private company, 6.3 would be our owner's equity in, in the town. So our beginning balance is 6.3 million, we add in the 1.28 million in our net revenues over expenditures, we have a ending balance of 17.5 million, what we project in the 22, 2122 budget that we're in fiscal year. Again, there's another bucket, the, the town has annual reserve requirements, these are requirements that we must meet for, per council policy, that's a 15% emergency reserve, and this is based off of our general fund operation expenditures. So it's, it's off of our operation expenditures, our COP debt service, I mean, our ARC and our UAL. So this is 15% of those expenditures. And then we have an operational annual reserve requirement of 20%, and that equates to 3.3 million. So those, these reserve requirements must be met as we go through each, each year. And they, these are, are one-time, they're not cumulative. So the available balance minus our required reserves, so the 17.5 million minus the 2.4, 3.3 million leaves us an available balance of 11.7 million. So what we were, this available balance is the unallocated portion of, of, of the general fund balance that is available and unallocated for within the general fund. So this is the, where our, our planning exercise was, was presented to the city council regarding some priorities, or we created what we called set aside buckets, the priorities for whether it's capital projects, funding towards our long-term liabilities, debt service, and, and what have you. So of this 11.7 million that we have, these set aside buckets were set up to show if we allocate a certain amount of money, what that would mean to our net available fund balance. So of the 11.7 million in this exercise, we say we're gonna contribute 5 million to our long-term liability, which would be our pension UAL, unfunded actuarial liability of 5 million. That would be this with a net available fund balance of 6.7 million. And as we went through this exercise, we, we notified the council that we would want to make sure that we, we do not go below, below recommended minimum allocated, unallocated fund balance. And we had set that threshold at 5%, meaning that at no time, we cannot go below this amount in available net fund balance. So as you can see, 5% is of this, this 5% is based of our, of our current expenditures. And so our ending net available 6.7 is above this 831,000 of, of our balance.
Robert, I think we have two hands up. Robert, Robert, we have two hands up, first Bob and then me.
I just want to point out that, that this portion of the, of the spreadsheet, the set aside buckets that Robert is displaying, that was kind of the end product at the, at the council meeting. In other words, we filled those buckets in kind of arbitrarily. It was actually an exercise that Bill Widmer and, and George Roderick did. In your handout, your meeting materials, attachment one is a copy of the spreadsheet basically blank with none of those buckets filled in. And the only, the only bucket in the, in the document you have is the debt service, because we have to fund the debt service. And by the way, the debt service, the certificates of participation are at approximately 2% interest. And they are fully amortized over 10 years. So the issue was, and my main number one goal, when I agreed to serve on the council, was to trade that 7% Calpers debt and use the 2% money we have in these certificates of participation to make a paydown against our UAL. And just quickly, if, you don't have to look at it now, but if you look at the attachment in your meeting materials, you'll see, for example, that the UAL payments were mu, much higher, well, actually, he's got that up now. You can see that the UAL payments yeah, UAL Calpers Pension, they jumped from, we're gonna jump from 1,400,000 this year to 1,654,000 the next year, to 1,778,000 the next year, et cetera, to almost 2 million to two years after that, and over 2 million. So we got numbers from Calpers, as, as you may remember, it was at the presentation at our last finance meeting. And the end result of it is the, is the spreadsheet that Robert had up before, where we, this one here, where we if we make that one-time, $5 million payment against our pension obligations, it changes, obviously, the UAL payments that we're gonna make going forward. And you can see they're dramatically less, and I, we hope with Calpers income realizations that they had last year, and we hope maybe that doesn't look so good right now this year, but we're hoping that, in fact, the numbers will be even lower than that. But this is the result of the work that the finance committee did with, with, with I forget the guy's name, Julian from.
Yeah, I mean, Julian, yeah, Julian Robinson, sorry.
And so we're gonna, the, the consensus in the, on the council was that we would make that $5 million payment before the end of this fiscal year, so that it will be reflected as soon as possible in the Calpers reports, which probably will be the reports dated June 30, 2022, which will be not the next set, but the set after. Did, did I say everything properly, Robert?
Yes, you did, and, and thank you, Councilmember Polito, yes. And, and, and when I pulled up the spreadsheet, I had it in the last tab, which is correct, we, we set up these buckets. And, and this was the initial recommendation, the initial financial planning model, and as, as Councilmember Polito mentioned, these were our pension obligations, UAL payments at that time. And in the staff report, it, it recommends that there's a 3 million, 4 million, 5 million payment towards our Calpers pension, which we reviewed at our January Finance Committee meeting. And so this is a result of, if we contributed 5 million, this would be our new UAL, it would go from this 1.654 million to 1,304. The 1.778 million would go down to 1.298. So just, in the staff report, it, it, it shows what the base amount was, which were these amounts, and then we, we did it a listing based off of 3 million, 4 million, 5 million. Through the exercise, 5 million was selected, so at 5 million on your UAL. Um, through the exercise, five million was selected. So at five million on your U A L, we're we're changed going forward. So um roughly, it's about, um, if we contributed five million, it's about two point nine million in in savings. Um, an estimated total reduction in our U A L payment if we contributed five million uh rather than if we did nothing. Um, so there's just that reduction in its own. Um, and that would flow through in our operational expenditures up here. So um and again, that's just an estimate based off of what we compared with our, if we did nothing and compared to if we contributed five million, um, the net reduction would be about uh two point nine, nine million.
That that's that's very helpful. Yeah, thank you very much. So um ju- just a slight, a small question about what you just talked about, and then I have two other questions I've been holding on to. Um, so on this, has the council made the actual um firm decision to make that five million dollar payment, or is that just a possibility?
It's pretty definite.
Um, it it it, yeah, it it's a pretty much, it's a direction. Um, we'll we'll bring it to the council in um basically in probably in in April. And right now, we're 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 going to work with Calpers to see what we need to do as far as um uh the process and what that means. Um, but yeah, the intent is to contribute five million. Um, and 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 to in doing so, we would um instead of paying off our debt service earlier, which we had a five-year call option to pay off, um, we have a ten-year C O P um uh leaseback agreement. Uh, instead of paying it in five years, we're gonna, which we had anticipated, we're gonna move that and pay it off in the the normal ten years and move up a payment to our U A L um uh pension liability. And like uh coun- councilmember Polita mentioned, our our borrowing rate on the C O P is about two percent. So and Pers uh uh discount rate at the time is a seven percent, so there's a five percent um savings or arbitrage that we're getting if we contribute the five million that we would pay off. Uh, we'd otherwise pay off our C O P debt service early, we contribute that to our uh pension liability instead.
Okay, yeah, that that's great. Uh, the other two questions on the certificates of participation. I, you know, during my legal career, I did many kinds of financings, but most related to stock. Uh, and I never, I've never been involved in certificates of participation. And my question is, having not been through that process and having not seen the actual documents relating to it, are there any restrictions in that on what we can use the proceeds for?
Uh, yes, uh, great question. Uh, yes, in in doing so, it we listed that the the these um the lease or the 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 debt service, the proceeds would be used for capital projects uh for the town. And and um the town center was what we illustrated as the reason for um for this funding. Um, when we went out to front, get the funding settled, it was for use of capital projects, towards capital projects. And the town center was was the um the main reason um listed as our for the use of the proceeds.
Okay, I I'm I'm just thinking out loud. So the fact that we're going to uh delay, well, not really delay, but we're not, we're not going to pay off the certificates of participation early at the five-year call because we'd rather have the ability to use that money in the interim as arbitrage. Uh, okay, that all makes perfect sense. Thank you very much. The the other question, which is, I'm sure I've just done something wrong in my calculations, but uh and it in in looking at the spreadsheet you have, under annual reserve requirements, um you have uh fifteen percent emergency and twenty percent operational. And for the uh this fiscal year, I tried doing the math, and it turned out that, at least on my calculator, the two point four nine million uh turned out to be fourteen point seven percent of the general fund balance, and the three point three million turned out to be eighteen point nine percent. Is there what, is there a reason why they don't actually equal fifteen percent and twenty percent?
And no, it I I don't see why. It could maybe be a rounding, but um but these are basically off of um these three buckets is where we're calculating the twenty percent. Um, set aside, and then for the fifteen percent emergency is the same. It's off of operation expenditures, our O P E D and our U A L pension.
Oh, oh, well, that maybe that, I think you you may have answered my question. I was doing them as a percentage of total general fund expenditures. That's not, that's not the denominator?
Oh, that's, no, it's it's a, it's a, and great question. Sorry about that. Yeah, the clarification is it's operation expenditures, our ARC, O P E D, and our our U A L uh Calpers pension are the three buckets that are used to um come up with the fifteen percent and the twenty percent.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, that's, I'm done. Uh, Rick, I think your hand's up next.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to clarify uh that the, within the set aside buckets, the five million is definitely a consensus of the council. Uh, that number could change when we revisit this either in March or April. And all of the other numbers that you see there are estimates. So they'll the they'll be addressed at this next discussion and and we'll finalize them. But understand that finalization is is certainly going to be applicable to uh the number uh for the U A L uh uh payment uh that that is identified in column E. But everything else, and and column F's pretty secure, but everything else is is just an estimate in the future. And numbers are going to change in the future, both in terms of the actual revenues. And we'll be discussing, you know, what exactly needs to go into each of these master plans. So everything uh else that's in this set aside bucket area is subject to change in the future. Um, and some of it certainly will change because things get carried over from one year to the other and you know, revenue changes. Uh, these are, these are, these are all uh just estimates.
Thanks, Rick. Uh, Steve, quickly.
Right.
Uh, I have a question regarding the U A L. I'm just trying to get my my mind mind around that just a little bit more because there's several um line items on there. It, did did the U A L come about, I know the U A L will come about as a difference between the fund assets and the fund liabilities that discount the present value. Did that come about as a point in time, and it continues to come around every year, so that that number is, that number is changing?
Yeah, it it's a moving target. I would suggest that, Robert, the 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 finance committee did a did a report which was heavily uh edited by George. But we did a report on the entire uh history of the town with Calpers and how the U A L developed. It makes for interesting reading if you want to grow up to be a Calpers basher like I am.
The the question I'm going to get at is, is I understand that there's an unfunded liability and it attracts seven percent. And that if you pay it, there's a principal reduction, and then there's a, obviously, a future interest reduction to to on it. Does that, that seven percent isn't credited to us on the other side? That stays, that goes to the Calpers.
No, it goes to us.
So are we paying ourselves seven percent?
No, we're we're eliminating the seven percent charge that Calpers bills us annually, in essence.
I I don't know, maybe I'll just get my knickers in a twist, but if if I owe my son money and he's part of the family and I give him seven percent, it doesn't seem to me like it's left the family.
I'm not sure I follow that.
You're 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 trying to get the arbitrage between seven percent and two percent. If the seven percent is credited to the town of Atherton, that's different than the two percent that's getting, that's being eaten by whoever takes the two percent. It just seems to me like we're paying ourselves. Is that?
Uh, the the seven percent involves an increase in the U A L based on the uh Calpers estimate. It's not within the family. Calpers is totally out of the family.
Okay.
I mean, if we could leave, if we could leave Calpers in its entirety, we would, but they make it incredibly oppressive to leave. It would cost, I don't know how many, and and it it's a stupid number. It's like a hundred million dollars or more. It it's just a stupid number.
Yeah, literally.
Yeah, and and a lot of it is is the the um the discount rate, meaning that's that's the uh what what the the plan is going to make every year, seven percent. Um, in 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 over the past ten years, there's been fluctuation. It's 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 achieved ten percent rate of return, it's received four percent rate of return. But the the standard um discount rate in the plan and for the for the plans has been uh up to recently with seven percent. Um, prior and several years ago, um, the the discount rate was uh seven point five percent and and over time reduced to seven percent. Now, um, starting in July of two thousand twenty-two, that discount rate is now going to be six point eight percent. Um, so their their investment rate of return um for the plan is 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 that now, six point eight percent. Um, this previous fiscal year ending uh June two thousand twenty-one, the plan uh the the pension plan made twenty-one point three percent uh rate of return uh investment return on on the pension plan. So it'll fluctuate, but the seven percent, now the six point eight percent is now the standard uh discount rate going forward for the next four years.
Is part of the twenty-one percent the seven percent that we're paying?
No, different thing.
Twenty-one percent gets rolled in, correct? It's different.
The twenty-one percent is the rate of return inside the fund. The seven percent is the cost of our liability, and that that's got to go somewhere else. This doesn't get credited to us. It doesn't reduce our liability. The principal payment does, but not the seven percent. Right?
It reduces the rate at which the liability grows.
Yes.
Yeah, because the principal payment brings down the liability. It drops from whatever down by five million dollars, if that's a total principal payment, so it goes down. The the seven percent, I just don't, I don't kind of get where that gets credited.
I I I don't, I think I maybe can shed some light on this based on the reading I've done. That the unfunded liability is a is a present value of a much bigger number in the future, okay? And it's unfunded. So sort of by definition, when another year passes, that unfunded liability is going to grow by seven percent until ultimately it arrives at what the ultimate liability is. So we're not paying Calpers uh seven percent. We're not, it's just since we haven't funded the whole thing, the unfunded part is just going to keep growing by the discount rate.
So instead of using six point eight or whatever our discount rate, they're using seven.
And this U A L payment uh that you first asked about, Steve? That is a Calpers attempt to basically, over a long period of time, reduce that unfunded liability to zero.
Oh, over twenty years now.
Yeah.
So Steve, Steve, his background information, the discount rate used to be eight. Gone from eight, eight and a half, to eight and three eighths, to eight and a quarter, to eight, down to, anyway. It just went down to six point eight. So future reports will be based on six point eight. But um so so that number is like every other number, it's a moving target, but I don't expect it will rise uh uh any higher than six point eight i- in my lifetime.
Okay. I I mean, I, so I understa- I I think I understand it now. The the ob- obligation, the futures there, what they're doing is taking it back to the present value, and they're using seven percent. So when we make payments, we're we're making, we're make truly making payments to to the plan. We're not making interest payments like we would to a bank where the money goes elsewhere.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, um.
Is there any other question?
I I think, well, Tom, you had your hand up. Did you have a different question?
Well, I uh, something Bob said. Uh, did I interpret that correctly, that you think that, you know, the ultimate liability that they've determined actuarially is way too high?
Well, I'm not an actuary. I've I've dealt with a lot of actuaries. I I just think, again, if, and I'm, and I'll get this report to you too, or I'll make sure Robert does. Every single mistake that they've made has always been it uh had a negative impact on our on our uh pension situation. So I got to think at some point, there's going to be some, some of this stuff's going to swing the other way, so to speak. Now, whether that's just because of what what causes it, I don't know, but we have made every payment since we joined Calpers required to cover that year's funding, as well as paying literally millions of dollars towards our unfunded liability, and yet we've gone from eighty-two percent funding to seventy percent funding. So something's wrong with that picture. I just think at some point, it's going to start swinging the other way. Yeah, we hope.
And it's amazing that we've had a ten, eleven, twelve-year stock market that's still happening.
Yeah, yeah, it's amazing, yes.
At at one point um in early two thousands, late, you know, nineteen ninety-nine, the 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 pension was fully funded. Um, but these, over time, plans got more, um, they're different plans. They got more expensive. Uh, then you have, they put in some different assumptions, mortality rates increased. Um, you know, um, the the out asset allocations have changed. Uh, it used to be more in fixed fixed income investment. Now it's more in equity. And 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 with the loss back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, um, the the pension plan is 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 cat is plain catch-up um to that, to that time, to those losses. So um it's a culmination of 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 different things and different um policies that the pension plan has implemented over time, not including the discount rate, but also um the um rates moving uh in in in, they went from thirty years uh amortization to recently with twenty years amortization. So all those numbers things have affected the unfunded component of of the pension liability.
So.
So all over the the uh some degree of control over the discount ratios?
None, is my understanding.
What was that?
I thought I saw something about voting, but whether it should be this or that.
Um, the discount rate that that is the is is basically, it's it's derived through a um a numerous studies with the pension plan uh on actuaries and what they think based on their investment allocation, what they can um meet or or uh as far as the investments. And so.
But do we greenlight it?
No, we don't get a say.
No say?
Nope.
No. Um, it it's gone from about eight percent to now six point eight percent in the span of um twelve, thirteen years.
Um, Robert. Robert, haven't, didn't they also implement relatively recently um a a trigger that when the fund performs exceptionally well in a particular year, they are required to be discovered?
Correct. Um, and and it just happened this year um that they implemented a policy um a a a funding rate mitigation policy they implemented in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, that any given year, if the investment returns are over a certain threshold, then the they would lower the discount rate by a percentage. Um, and so it it the metric is, uh, because it was twenty-one. Um, and so it, it, the metric is, uh, because it was twenty-one percent, um, it was almost three times, the, it's three times the discount rate. So the reduction was point two percent, um, in the discount rate. And it was supposed to only be for that giving year. Correct, correct. And because it, it actually, go ahead.
I was going to say, I think they also changed their asset allocation strategy to reduce risk. And that's why, that's why the expected return has gone down a little. Yes.
Correct. And, and, and thank you for that, that point. Um, I was just going to mention that the funny risk mitigation policy was one policy trigger that took effect. But the other side of it was every four years, Calpers reviews their asset liability. Uh, it's called the AOM Asset Liability Management Review. And this year in two thousand twenty-one, the, the calendar year two thousand twenty-one was the, uh, Asset Liability Management Review year. And it just happened to coincide at the same time where the, uh, risk mitigation policy took into effect. So because of that, they decided, okay, we're going to reduce to six point eight percent. But also they decided to review the asset like, building, um, assets of the, of the plan. And they decided to look at, um, investments based off of meeting a six point eight return. And so that'll be, six point eight will be the next discount rate for the next four years.
Do we get to choose investment allocate? Are the two, two levers that we have, how much, how much is put in? So how much excess is put in to the plan as well as, um, the investment allocation? Are those the only two lever, are, are those two levers?
We, we don't have any say over how the money's invested.
So the, the recent addition of alternative investments, we, we turn over like turtles and they just, they do what they want to do.
Yeah, that's part of the problem is basically it's a black box. We have no control over it. They kind of tell us, uh, how they're, you know, that, what their policies are, but we have no choice over what the, what investments are made. We have no choice over what, uh, the discount rate is. And that's, I think, one of the reasons it's so frustrating is because they keep telling us every year, okay, well, you pay this amount and that takes care of your unfunded accrued liability. And then the next year they say, oh, sorry, no, we need more. And it, it, it's just goes on and on and on. Um, okay, I'm gonna.
Yeah, but City Manager, George Roderick, City Manager has, has a, up on, on the screen. It is kind of shows you what the rate of returns were since two thousand twelve on the plan. Um, it went point one percent in two thousand twelve and then, uh, two thousand fourteen with eighteen point four percent. Uh, two thousand sixteen, you can see it was point six percent investment return. And, and you can see over time, in two thousand twenty, that was the pandemic year, it, uh, they ended up being at four point seven percent. Um, so right now, the highest year we've had in the last twelve, ten years is twenty-one point three percent.
So I'm going to, um, suggest that, um, this is all very interesting and helpful, but I think we need to move on. What I would like to do though, Robert, is, um, would you please send out to all members of the committee as well as Steve Brickley, um, the, the memo that Bob was referring to from last year that we sent to the council, which, uh, gives a lot of helpful history about what's been going on with Calpers. That would be great.
Yep, I, I, I'll resend that to the committee and then I'll send it to Mr. Hill and Mr. Brickley. Um, yeah, it went out in, uh, January, February of last year, um, to the city council.
Thank you.
If I could.
Yeah, and so I just wanted to, yeah, go ahead, Mr.
Just one, one thing before we, I, I, it sounds like we're going to move on. The, the, the essence of, of that, uh, spreadsheet was to be able to move money around and see whether we were going to run out of money and how much we could afford to, to pay down our Calpers debt. And if you look at, uh, look at it, can you put it right back up just for a second, Robert?
Uh.
If, if, if not, I can, I can just summarize. When we pay down the five million in this fiscal year ending June thirtieth, we're still going to have an available fund balance above and beyond any reserves of six points, uh, eight million dollars. And even after we start filling in those buckets, yeah, down right there, six point seven, seven, eight. And even when we start spending money starting next year and the following years, you'll see that we still have a comfortable, reasonably comfortable cushion, um, finally getting down to about a million bucks in five years out. So, you know, we have to pay attention to it, but I can tell you that historically for the past ten years, uh, revenues have always exceeded our budgeted revenues and expenditures have always been less than our budgeted expenditures. So, uh, I, I think w- we will see that, uh, we, we'll never get to that million fifty, unless we get a little heavy-handed on the spending side, which, uh, I'm not going to say will never happen. But of course, we've been pretty good about controlling our spending in this town, I think. So that's all I had.
Thank you, Councilmember Puelito. Yeah. And, and again, this, this was an exercise, uh, to show, um, because other than, uh, to, to focus on whatever priorities that county, town council has, and those being long-term liabilities and also capital projects. And so, um, a lot of the funding for capital projects, if they're not augmented by special revenue funds, street funds, um, the general fund is the biggest contributor for funding towards capital projects. So this will show, this shows all these buckets of allocating money towards, um, different master plans, uh, within the town to accomplish some of the projects that, um, have they been identified. And then for your review in the staff report, there were some, uh, identified projects for the bike, bike and fed master plan, drainage master plan, uh, park, um, master plan and road, um, improvement and green infrastructure that are listed in the staff report to show in general, there's some top recommended projects within our cover improvement plan. That, um, again, the, some of the fundings are, um, the, the, the estimates are, are old. The, um, but just to show that there's some projects out there with some funding dollars, um, for, for completions, just to show, um, that what is needed in funding from the general fund to meet some of these, um, capital project outlays.
Robert, before you take that down, I did have one unrelated question, unrelated to this current topic. Could you go back up to the top of the chart where it shows the major revenues? So I just, I couldn't figure out why under, um, police, why is it that the revenues, first of all, I'd love to know what revenues we get from the police. I guess it's giving out speeding tickets or something. I don't know. But, um, the revenues during fiscal twenty-one were sixty, sixty-eight thousand. And then they jumped this year to almost two hundred and ten thousand. How, what, what, what's the explanation for that change?
COVID.
Uh.
They didn't want to, they didn't want to give anybody a ticket.
So, okay, that's interesting.
Yeah.
That's a huge, that's a huge difference. Okay. Yep.
There's some, um, funding, yeah, some funding revenues. But these are, again, just on the revenue, they're percentages, um, and you could see on the far, um, on column B, the, the forecasted percentages going forward in the out years of, of these revenues, what they're, what we base them on, off of.
Okay, I, I think COVID's the answer. So thank you. Please move on.
Thank you. Um, so yeah, the next item is the, the item, uh, number five. Just wanted to go over with the, um, finance committee, the, uh, fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget kickoff and overview, um, that was presented to city council. Um, you know, staff is providing the, the, this overview. This is the first meeting of our budget cycle. And, um, uh, it's a budget kickoff, our annual review, uh, it includes a recap of our current fiscal year, our preliminary budget assumptions and our five-year forecast. Uh, uh, again, this is what presented to the council. I have a, um, brief PowerPoint for the committee to review, to look at. I wanted to show, um, the committee, uh, you have, what's, what's in the staff report is in this PowerPoint. Again, this is just the kickoff for the, um, our twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three budget. We go over our major revenue sources, our five-year forecast, expenditure categories in five-year forecast, um, the, the budget process discussion and our calendar. So in, in, um, okay. So can you see it? You, you can see my screen, correct?
Oh, yes.
Okay, okay. So, uh, on this, on this, this, um, the recap, we estimated at the budget mid-year, uh, twenty point five million in revenue to sixteen point six three million in expenditures.
Robert, Robert. Um, I.
Yes.
I think we're still on the last one. Is this, is this a different one? No, this, we're still on the last spreadsheet you showed us. Hasn't changed, I don't think.
Oh. I'm sorry. You see now?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, sorry. This is, I was like, uh.
Uh, Robert in the committee, just so you know, the, the council didn't get this presentation. So I, I, they, they, their meeting went long and they didn't get to see it, so.
Well, I'm glad we get to see it.
Yep.
And I'm glad we didn't. Four hours, we'd already been beating this stuff up.
So Robert, are you going to go through the presentation or what was your plan?
You're, I think you're, you might be new.
Did you lose us, Robert? I think he lost us. I'll go, I'll go tap on his office door.
Thanks, George.
Is someone sitting outside? Because there's a very nice little bird in the background chirping away.
It, it might be coming, might be coming from me because I'm just sitting next to a window. I always leave the window open and we do get some nice birds around here.
No problem.
Okay, can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I got disconnected. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, yeah, so, uh, yes, George was mentioning that this wasn't, um, this was on the council, uh, a, a agenda last, uh, that the study session. Um, so it was in the council packet. We did not go over in detail with the council. So, um, my anticipation is that we would and, and, and prior to the finance committee meeting. So the council has seen it, but has not seen, um, this PowerPoint presentation. And it was all included in the packet. So just wanted to go over this with the finance committee, uh, just to kind of show, um, what our five-year, our, our, our beginning study session and our five-year forecast, um, some elements. It's a quick presentation. Uh, if you all have any questions or George, uh, any, anything you want to add or I can present? Okay. So yeah, uh, so can you see my screen? I want to make sure you can see that before I, I keep going forward.
Yes, we can.
Okay. So, okay, great. So correct, uh, by mid-year, this recap, we, for twenty-one, twenty-two, we estimated twenty point five million in revenue to sixteen point six three in expenditures, with the transfers out of four point three million. Three point five million of that is the town center project allocation. Eight hundred and sixty-one of that is the, um, debt service on the CLP, uh, lease agreement. So we have a negative four hundred and twenty-six thousand, four oh seven and, uh, remaining for twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, that's what we're showing for the fiscal year, uh, ending twenty-one, twenty-two. This, uh, regarding our fund balance and reserves. So we, we're projecting the twenty-one, twenty-two ending fund balance of seventeen point five million against sixteen point six three million in expenditures. With our reserve requirements of fifteen percent, that's two point four million. Our twenty percent contingency is three point three. Our total reserve requirement's five point eight million, that's fifteen and twenty percent. And then we have American Rescue Plan Reserve of one point seven. These are being backed out as we identify projects. So our ending general fund allocated balance for twenty-one, twenty-two is ten million, uh, dollars. Again, um, just wanted to point out as we did in the previous item, uh, general fund major revenue sources. Uh, currently our, our property taxes consist of seventy percent of our general fund revenue. Building fees and ERAF are a big component, are considered major revenues in our five-year forecast. Um, in here is from twenty-two, twenty-three, these, um, projections, uh, for property taxes are projected at four percent to four point five percent in the forecast. Beginning in twenty-two, twenty-three, it's four percent for property taxes, um, as an increase. Building fees are projected at three percent in the forecast. And ERAF, as, um, you have known and we've discussed previously, the ERAF has fluctuated over the years. We received two point two million in this fiscal year, twenty-one, twenty-two. We anticipate next year, um, we're, we're, staff is comfortable with budgeting one point six million in ERAF revenue, um, being that there's a state, there's always a state grab for that funding. And, um, we forecasted that one as one point six million out into twenty-six, twenty-seven. But the other general fund, other revenue sources for five, within the five-year forecast ranges from three point four million to three point seven million. Again, these revenues are, are sales tax, franchise fees, business license, our planning and department, uh, public works revenue, uh, and park and other revenues. So the above revenues are projected at conservatively between one and two percent in our five-year forecast. Again, ma- these are our major fund expenditures within operations, uh, within the budget. So the highest one, um, operationally is our police department. It consists of fifty, fifty-four point four percent of the general fund operation expenditure budget. The next highest is our public works department budget, which is, it consists of fifteen point seven percent. So just wanted to recap major components of, uh, of, of our operational expenses. Our labor costs in the forecasting model is at three point five percent in the first year and four percent in the out years. Uh, pension costs for twenty-two, twenty-three, this is the local miscellaneous, the normal cost, this is the normal cost we pay through payroll. Um, it's at eleven point zero six percent. Um, it, it has, is unchanged in twenty-one, twenty-two. It's actually eleven point zero six percent and next year it's forecasted to be the same. Local, um, safety is at twenty-five point six four percent projection in the new fiscal year. However, currently right now, it's, it's, uh, twenty-five point five nine percent. So it's an increase of point zero five percent in our normal cost. Um, again, just want to reiterate, our actual amount is, um, is one percent less for miscellaneous and three percent less for public safety, meaning the town contribution is ten point zero six percent. And for local safety, it's, it's twenty-two point six percent. Uh, we mentioned in our OPEB arc, there is currently eight point seven million in the trust for the town. Uh, we had allocated up to five million towards this trust and it's grown to eight point seven million over time. Uh, operation expenditures, we forecasted those expenditures between three point five and four point five percent in the forecasting model. Uh, for the UAL for next fiscal year, this is not, this is counting, not counting any contributions towards our unfunded liability. It's four hundred and sixty-eight thousand for miscellaneous, uh, employees and our public safety at one point one eight million. So the total is about one point six million in the twenty-two, twenty-three year. Major components of our operational costs in the general fund, uh, it includes a professional service contracts. We have a building contract and IT services, uh, contract for, um, within the town. MCE, that's our public works, um, street maintenance, uh, building maintenance and park maintenance currently. Um, our contractual, custodial services, custodial services is, is a major component and that's about a hundred and forty thousand. Landscape services will be a new, um, service, uh, anticipated in the next coming year. That'll be landscaping for the town center, library area, and also for the town park. Um, other services, planning services and legal services, those are also professional. Those are also professional service contracts that are within the town. Unfunded crew liability, this is just a snapshot of what our current unfunded liability is, beginning with twenty two, twenty three and going out to twenty-six point two seven, twenty-six, twenty-seven in the fiscal year. So currently it's at one point six five million. And by, in five years from now, it's estimated at two point zero five million. Again, the UAL, our unfunded liability amounts are invoiced to us each year and at the beginning of each fiscal year. Again, our current UAL payments for twenty one, twenty two is one point four million. As you can see, four hundred is miscellaneous and one million twenty-nine is.
Robert, Robert, I have a, I have a question about that. So apropos of what we were discussing before, is this going to cha, this is going to change, right? If we do that five million dollar payment?
Correct, it will, it will change. This is, this is prior to any funding allocation towards the UAL. This is, this is status quo with, currently, right now.
Okay, great, thank you.
No contributions to additional, correct?
Got it, thanks.
And then, you're welcome. And so there, just real quick, the increase from, in twenty two, twenty three is about two hundred and thirty thousand over our UAL payments for this year. Our reserve balances, again, we have our fifteen percent emergency reserve, twenty percent operating reserve, and they are of general fund operating, operation expenditures. Our unallocated fund balance, as we discussed in the previous item, it's any remaining balance that's not reserved, committed or specifically assigned. It's, it's funds that, that have not been assigned and can be assigned by town council to town, city council by town priority. And again, this is just a summary of all the major total revenue, all our expenditures, salaries and benefits, UAL, debt service within the five-year forecast. So you can see our net fund balance goes from two point four million to three point four million. ERAF is included as a major revenue. Again, these aren't actual budgeted expenditures year over year. These are just a forecasted snapshot and, and are anticipated to change based off of operational needs and, and certain costs. Any questions? And then this slide just shows our fund balance projections based off of the previous side of the two point four million through three point four million of the revenues over expenditures. You can see the ending fund balance, beginning of twenty million in twenty two, twenty three, minus our reserves, thirteen point nine million would be the remaining unallocated fund balance. And as you can see over here in twenty five, twenty six, this area is a negative because this, this was the area where we were anticipating the CLP payoff of the, of the CLP five-year contribution. But as you can see, our, our unallocated fund balance goes from thirteen point nine million to nineteen point eight million in this five-year forecast. It does not include any allocations to capital projects beyond our current twenty one, twenty two year. And it, and the remaining unallocated fund balance is a rolling balance, as you can see, going forward. And this is just a snapshot of a calendar for this budget cycle. Our operations budget will be presented to the city council at its April sixth study session. Our capital improvement budget will be presented May fourth. And the budget study session on June four, June first will culminate the discussions of the operations budget, capital improvement budget and special revenue funds and with anticipated budget adoption on June fifteenth. That, that was the staff report. Everything in the staff report is a snapshot in this PowerPoint presentation. Any questions?
I, I had a question. When I read the detail of how you were forecasting revenues and expenditures going forward, it seemed, my, the impression I got was you were making very conservative assumptions, both for revenues and expenditures. And that as a result of that, your available fund balances are really the worst-case scenario. Something of a worst-case scenario. And I wonder, is, is that in any way misleading the council when they are making decisions about what to do in the future?
Question.
Um, I, I think on, on, first, for the revenue side, we, we, we tend to focus on our property taxes. And those, we, we do focus, we do forecast conservatively. However, we have a consultant, property tax consultant that helps us to verify our property tax revenue and our assessments within the town. And so we kind of go on the low-end number of what they, what they recommend. And it is conservative. We tend to be that way in hopes of, of, we don't want to over project on some revenues. Again, one would be the ERAF revenue. It's been coming in higher than anticipated, but again, that's one revenue that has been at, at, at stake with the state. So that's one where we've budgeted conservatively the past couple of years at one point one million. And we've come in around one point six to, you know, recently with two point two million. So those two are communicated, they're budgeted conservatively. But just, just for the sake of maintaining, just being fiscally responsible and not overcommitting on some, some anticipated revenue that may not come in. The, on the expenditure side, we, we tend to budget within about three and a half to four and a half percent going forward. Some, there's some years and years that we don't spend. A, a lot of our budgeted amount, but again, it's just, it's a budget. And, and we maintain where we can as far as our operation expenditures. And, and coming in at four, five percent is conservative. And sometimes, you know, we, we, we reduce that to sometimes three percent in, in, in certain years. But it's based off of actual sometimes as well.
But you also have these contingency reserves.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, which could absorb these, you know, any kind of bad estimates going forward.
Correct. And, and I think, and we, in, in, in budgeting and conserving our, our unallocated balance, I think a lot of it's to, we're anticipating that, that there's, there's a lot of capital project need. And, and sometimes we, we haven't had a, a true, because of the town center, a lot of things are put off as far as other capital projects. So we haven't really identified or put money aside yet for that. And, and so we want to ensure that, one, operations are met and, two, that any, any net revenue that comes through the town, that, you know, we're conservative in, in one, how we spend it. And, and, and two, recently with, with the pandemic, not knowing what certain, what it can mean to, to town on operations side, but much, much less on, on the revenue side, we're, we're pretty much sheltered than other cities. We don't rely a lot on self-tax, we don't rely a lot on occupancy tax. So our, our property taxes have, have been going up each, every, every year, but not consistently. But they've been going up more than what we've anticipated in our projections.
Um, Steve, that's George, city manager, just to, to, to fine tune on that operational reserve and mandatory emergency reserve. Both of those are there as mandated by the town's fiscal policies. And from a day-to-day operational perspective, as the city manager, I don't have the authority to allow our fund balance to dip below those. So if, if, if in any given month we want to do something and it's going to require us to dip into our reserves, I have to go to the city council to get approval to do that. Everything from meeting payroll to doing a street project. So those are there beyond that. So we keep our fund balance above that to give us that little bit of cushion.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Please?
I, I just wanted that, what Tom mentioned, I'm used to budgets that are based on what you think the actual outcome is, they're not aggressive and they're not conservative. And that way you know that the numbers that you're looking at are your best estimate of what they're going to be and that there's not any other assumptions that are made in them. And that the reserves are there to cover the difference. And if the reserves are, are inadequate, because the fifteen and the twenty percent isn't enough, because you need a certain few more percent to operate the business, then there needs to be an additional reserve and the, the other numbers need to be solid. I, when I look at a budget, I just like to know that it's my best estimate, period. That there's not some overly conservative on the revenue side and overly, not overly, but conservative on the expense side. That's just, just, just my comment.
Does Mayor DeGolia have anything to say?
Well, I mean, the reality is the staff has been very conservative on these issues and the town council takes that into account, which isn't the best situation, but that's the reality. And I think we're working on it, but it has been true.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Robert, and also George, for all that information on the presentation. It's very well organized and very helpful. I believe we are now to our, the final item prior to adjournment, which is to look at the next meetings that are coming up. Some of them are audit committee, audit and finance committee meetings. And another, one of them is actually a city council study session, but it's on the budget. So any of us who can attend would probably be a good idea. Robert, you want to run those down for us?
Yes, correct. So April sixth is listed on the agenda and that's the council study session. And it's listed here in, in hopes if, if the finance committee would like to join. And we listed as a joint meeting, but it's not mandatory by the finance committee. But it is April sixth. It's Wednesday, April sixth for the general fund operations budget review. And then May tenth is our standalone, would be our next regular finance committee meeting on May tenth.
And on the, on the study session, the Wednesday, April sixth, do you know, do you know what the start time is for that?
Directly around four o'clock is, is the start time usually?
Is, is four correct or do we need to wait and see what it's going to be?
It's going to be four o'clock.
It's four p.m.
Okay, that's great. Well, I will certainly try to attend. I encourage other members of this committee to attend too, if they, if they're available. Be very helpful. Is there any other business to come before this committee meeting, before we call for adjournment? Again, I want to, I want to formally welcome Tom Hill as a member of this committee. And thanks Steve Brickley for his time and his thoughts, very helpful to get other perspectives. And I will, oh, Tom, Tom's got his hand up.
Um, I did have a possible request. I've watched, I watched the last meeting of the finance committee where Julian Robinson presented and he presented that model they've developed. And I think he made the statement that not only town staff, but the finance committee could access that model, you know, to, to, you know, do what, to satisfy their own curiosity, curiosity. And I, I looked on the CalPERS website and I couldn't see any way of accessing it. Is, can that be made available to us individually?
I, I mean, I will look into that. I think it has to be, I'm registering, I think you have to select an agency. And I don't know if it's specific to agency email, but yeah, I can, I can look into that and contact Mr. Robinson to, to see if there's anything that we need to do additional to get the town committee members to be able to, to look at that.
Yeah, and I, I presume then that you have had access to it, is that right?
Correct.
Good.
Yeah, I, I have had access to it and I, I need to see, and I have a login for that. So I'll, I can see if, if maybe I can, what it takes to get others registered. If it's, my assumption is it's, it's, it's agency-specific for the login, but I could be not correct on that. So I'll, I'll double check and see if that's, that's a possibility.
Or maybe there could be a separate login for the finance committee.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great.
I do think Julian said that finance committee members could access it.
Yeah, that'll be great, Robert, if you can follow up on that. And if you can then send, let us know what you find out so that everybody on the finance committee who's interested can, could use the tool. Thank you.
I think it would understand, help, if, it would help me understand how the whole thing works.
Okay, any other questions, requests, other business? I move to adjourn. Ah, thank you, Wally. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor? We don't have to take, I, I, is there anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Okay, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you all so much for your time and I look forward to seeing a number of you on April sixth of the study session.